Call this meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Brennan.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
Councilmember Brian Erdy Alice.
Here.
Doug Shosso.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lynn Deal.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
I'm here.
Okay, first item on our agenda this evening is council election of a mayor pro tem. As specified by the charter on the second meeting of our January schedule, we will nominate and elect a mayor pro tem. With that, I would entertain nominations.
Your Honor, I nominate Clint Anderson.
Second. Okay.
Any others? All in. Do we have to do a ballot issue if there's only one?
If there's only one nomination, you can, the council can by consensus declare that person elected by acclamation.
Okay. Everybody in favor of Clint serving as mayor pro tem for the next two years? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Clint will be the mayor pro tem for the next two years.
Thank you, counsel and your honor. I really appreciate it and I look forward to learning more about all the mayor's responsibilities and helping out where I can. So, thank you all.
Thank you, I look forward to it. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing acting as the liquor licensing authority. This is a public hearing of the, for the city council, the city of Fort Morgan, acting as the liquor license, local liquor licensing authority for the city to determine whether the application for a hotel and restaurant license for Peppers LLC should be granted or denied. This hearing will be conducted pursuant to the laws of the state of Colorado and ordinances and procedures of the city of Fort Morgan. The purpose of this meeting is to receive information, data, and testimony by any interested parties in order to enable the city to make findings and reach conclusions required to be made by the state law as to whether or not the application should be approved or denied. One of the principal questions the council will be considered throughout this hearing relates to the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood for the outlets applied for and the desires of the inhabitants of that neighborhood with respect to the outlet. Those persons who will be heard during this hearing are parties of interest who are defined by state law as being the applicant, residents of the neighborhood, and owners or managers of businesses located within the neighborhoods. The order of this hearing will be as follows. At the conclusion of my opening comments, staff will report on the public notice of the hearing, posting of the property, status of the fingerprint reports, presentation of the application, review of petition. The applicants will present their case, meaning they will present testimony, exhibits, petitions, or other materials relevant to the application. Interested parties may then testify for or against the proposed application, after which the applicants will have an opportunity for rebuttal. At the conclusion of all testimony, the council will make its decision to approve or deny the application. All testimony will be given under oath by the city clerk. All exhibits presented during the hearing will be submitted to the city clerk and become part of the record. The clerk's office files are hereby admitted into the records of this hearing. Council previously set the boundaries of the neighborhood for the license as the entire city of Fort Morgan. Does anybody present object to the boundaries of the neighborhood? If not, we'll proceed with the public hearing. Legal notice, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, your honor. The property of this proposed licensee was posted with notice of this public hearing on December 16th, and that posting remained in place for at least 10 days. A legal notice was also published in the Fort Morgan Times on December 17th.
Presentation of the application, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, your honor. As you recall, this is a continuation of a public hearing that began on January 7th. At council's direction, we continued it to this date because the applicant wasn't here. There was, this is a application we originally received in October. Worked through it with the applicant, it was reviewed by my office, the city attorney's office, and the Fort Morgan Police Department, and deemed to be complete. We brought it to the council for formal acceptance, which you did by a vote on December 3rd, and we set the public hearing for January 7th. All the proper legal notices have been made and posted, and all the applicable fees have been paid. The primary purpose, as you noted in your opening comments of this hearing, is establishing the needs and desires for the liquor license. The most common method of doing that is by petitions. The applicant submitted petitions with 60 signatures on them. That's the total number of lines on the petition forms we supply. There is no standard or required number of signatures to be required. It's simply an easier way than getting people to come to the meeting and speak in favor or against the license. We had to out remove 29 of those signatures because they weren't residents of the city, which is not uncommon. We have not received any written or verbal comments either for or against the issuance of this license, and staff recommends that the council acting as the local license authority weigh the evidence presented at this hearing and make an objective decision on this application for a new hotel and restaurant liquor license, malt, venus, and spiritous liquors for Peppers LLC at 414 Railroad Avenue.
Okay. Next is comments by the applicant. Does the applicant wish to address council? Please come forward and.
I'm gonna have to swear again.
Did you get sworn in by the city clerk? Raise your right hand.
Raise your right hand. Do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, welcome.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Aye.
My name is Francisco Flores, and I'm here to hear this, see what you guys say about this application, and I'm here to answer any question that you have for me.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Okay. Does this council have any questions for the applicant, Mr. Flores?
My biggest question, Mr. Flores, was how you'll work with your employees or your staff to make sure we, you don't sell alcohol to underage customers.
We always, by the time I gotta be in business, I always be careful in everything we do. So, to talk to our employers, we always talk to them every day, and we always remind my employers what are we supposed to do and we have to do on the restaurant.
And Officer Crown, what resources do we have at the police department to help with training or help support his staff?
We don't provide training specifically. We kind of refer to the state liquor license process. There's training that they provide. It's not uncommon to host that. A lot of times, it's throughout different liquor inspections, we see kind of what the level of training is. Kind of conduce it to that resource specifically. We can pass on some basic information to them as to what the requirements are for state and local licensing, but we don't necessarily provide the training ourselves. We kind of leave it up to Department of Revenue to specifically put on that training. But anytime any specific entity wants that training, we can definitely point them in the right direction.
Great. Yeah, we want you to be successful, so yeah, so we can point you in the right direction for those trainings for your staff.
It's fine for me. Any, can I improve myself, it's better for me all the time?
You also own Acapulco Bay, correct?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so you're very familiar with the liquor licensing laws and procedures already then?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments for Mr. Flores? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this issue, or for or against? Seeing none. Public comments oral or written, Mr. Brennan, have any been received by your office prior to this?
No, your honor.
Comments by council. Does council have any comments regarding this issue?
I have nothing further, your honor.
Pardon me?
Oh, I said I have nothing further, your honor.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
I have a motion by Allison Howe and a second by Lynn Deal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Legal action, Mr. Wilson.
Mayor and council, you've heard the presentation of the application and the comment, the public comments. Appropriate action is by a resolution approving the, or denying the application.
Okay. I would entertain a resolution for approval or denial of the application.
Your honor, I make a resolution to approve the application for the new hotel and restaurant liquor license for Peppers LLC, Peppers located at 414 East Railroad Avenue.
Second. I have a resolution by Doug Shosso and a second by Brian Erdy Alice. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you. The next agenda on our item is a public hearing to consider an application for a special use permit to allow a home business and an R2 zoning at 1010 Maple Street. Once again, this is a public hearing. Please keep public comments to the issues before the council. Each speaker is asked to limit their time to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines and otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues, and to set a limit on the duration of testimony if I determine it to be necessary in light of the number of people who have signed up to testify. First is the legal issue. Mr. Brennan, was this hearing properly noticed?
Yes, your honor, a legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on January 2nd.
Presentation of the application, Mr. Glameyer.
All right, good evening. Thank you, mayor, members of the council. This is case number 20-001 SU. This is a special use permit for a home business located at 1010 Maple Street. This is with JK Customs. John and Katrina Mick. The applicant is here tonight. We're looking at this review because the property in question's in the R2 zoning district, which only allows a home business by special use permit. The applicants propose to operate a gunsmithing and customs shop where they would maintain, repair firearms and firearm parts for folks that may desire such services. They intend to do this out of their accessory building or a garage that's located on their property. I've included in your packet the list of criteria for approval of a special use permit that I would direct your attention to before you make your decision tonight. Staff did go through all of that criteria and does find that the home business would have little to no negative impact on the neighborhood. They're able to provide the additional parking space that's required for such a business, you know, where it's completely enclosed within the garage. I think this is certainly a nice business to have located in this area. We did take this to the planning commission at their regular meeting on January 13th. There were no comments at the meeting for or against. There were some questions from the planning commissioners that we were able to answer, or the applicants were able to answer. We've not received any comments into my office for or against this case since it's been publicly noticed. So, based on that and all of that information, staff would recommend approval of this case 20-001 SU, a special use permit for a home business, as was recommended by the planning commission unanimously to this body, with the following conditions, that the special use is personal to the applicants and cannot be inherited, and that the owners would meet all of the additional requirements for a home business, and they were provided with those requirements and don't have any concerns being able to meet those. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from my side, and again, the applicants are here in the back if you have questions for them as well, so.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Glameyer?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next, we'll hear comments from the applicant. Does the applicant wish to address council?
If you could sign the sheet right next to this podium. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Aye.
I'm just here to answer any questions, if you have any, or.
You're proposing a gunsmithing operation?
Yes, I am, sir.
Do you, what type of certification, licensing, or that do you possess?
At this moment, I am through, going through SDI schooling to get my certification in gunsmithing, so.
Okay. Do you have a current FFL?
No, I'm waiting for this hearing to pass before I apply for that.
Okay, so you'll wait to start your business?
Yes.
Once you get that?
Still gotta finish schooling too, so.
Funny how that works.
Right.
So, okay. That answers my question. So, have you checked with your insurance on being insured, you are the owner or the renter of your property?
We are the owner, and we'll check on that.
I make the calls for that, so I already have it in order.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Are you doing like extra security around your home?
We'll be installing more cameras and locks everywhere.
Safes.
Safes, especially since it's firearms.
Okay.
Thanks, Brian. Yeah, my question was just around safety for yourselves and for your clients and for the neighbors around you, so that's important to us. So, thanks for being cognizant of this item.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear public comment. Is there anybody in the audience wishes to speak to this for or against? Seeing none, I would ask the clerk if there were, you've received any oral or written comments prior to this meeting?
Not through my office, your honor.
Council discussion. Does council have any comments or discussion pertaining to this item?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
To close the move, move to close.
Second.
I have a motion by Doug Shosso, a second by Clint Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Legal action, Mr. Wilson.
Mayor and council, you've heard the background information and presentation on this application for a special use permit. Appropriate action is by a resolution approving or denying the permit.
I would entertain a resolution for approval or denial of.
Your honor, I offer a resolution to approve case 20-001 SU, the special use permit for a home business with the two conditions. One, that the special use is personal to the applicants and cannot be inherited, and second, that the owners meet the additional requirements for a home business as outlined in Article 5, Section 20-5-10B.
Second. I have a motion by Allison Howe, a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Next is a presentation on bids for three police patrol vehicles. Sergeant Brown.
Thank you, honor. Good evening, council members. Back here again tonight, reference three patrol cars. Again, as part of our capital improvement plan, we go out in the back lot, look and make sure all vehicles are up to standard, decide which ones are going to be replaced. This year, we have one vehicle that would have met the criteria of us replacing it, but we're not going to do that due to the fact that we are in the process of hiring more officers. And then to ensure that we have enough vehicles, we're keeping the Crown Vic. It was a 2006 Crown Vic, has about 95,000 miles on it right now. Also, we need to buy additional three vehicles. Therefore, that's why I'm in front of you tonight, asking for three SUVs. We put out the bid back on December 19th, closed it out on January 16th of 2020. Received a total of five bids, two for Dodge Durangos, one for a Chevy Tahoe, and two for a Ford Interceptor. The funding for this is going to come out of the capital expense account. We budgeted $141,750, which was approximately $47,250 for each vehicle. Based on our bids, we received one from Ehrlich for $30,400 for Dodge Durangos. For three of them, total is $91,200. So, based on that information, we decided to go with Ehrlich's bid, or we are requesting to go with Ehrlich's bid. Let me rephrase that and ask that you approve that.
Okay. I like your recommendation of local.
Yes, sir.
They'll be doing the service and.
Yes, sir, exactly.
Work on it. Does anybody else on council have any questions or comments for Sergeant Brown?
Sergeant Brown, usually there's some kind of outfitting cost included. Is that part of this?
For the vehicle?
Or will you come back for that?
We'll come back for that, soon as we decide what we're going to get, and then we'll have to put those out for bid as well.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I offer a resolution to accept the bid from Ehrlich C DJR in Fort Morgan in the amount of $91,200.
Second.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Doug Shosso. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing to consider the site plan for the city of Fort Morgan Fieldhouse project. Once again, this is a public hearing, and the same rules will apply as the previous public hearing. First off is the legal notice. Mr. Brennan, was this properly noticed?
Yes, your honor, a legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on January 3rd.
Presentation of the application, Mr. Glameyer.
Okay, I'm back. So, this is case 20-002 SP, a site plan for the community center/fieldhouse for the city of Fort Morgan. This is a review to determine the compatibility of a new community center/fieldhouse in the newly developed Centerpoint Plaza subdivision area. Typically, site plans don't come before this body for review, but this one is certainly rather extensive and large in nature, and I think has a lot of community interest. So, we really felt the need to take this through the entire site plan approval process that's outlined in Chapter 20 of the code. We did take this to the review of the planning commission as well. This is a parcel of land that you know is previously purchased and developed by the city that is slated to be, you know, the future city complex. It's been annexed into the city, subdivided and zoned as B2. There is a set of criteria for site plan review and consideration that I've included in your memo. Staff's tried to articulate how we meet the four criteria that are listed there. You know, after our thorough review, staff finds that this project does meet that criteria and should have little to no negative impacts on the adjacent properties. Most of the adjacent property is all vacant at this point, but certainly slated for this type of service in the future. We did not receive any comments for or against. At the planning commission meeting, there were some questions from the planning commissioners that the applicant's representative was able to answer. I will say there's one change in the application. Jeff Wells is listed as the contact person, but we've shifted that responsibility and duty to Mr. Nation tonight. We also have representatives from the civil engineering firm who did most of the work on the, on the fieldhouse site plan. We also have representatives from the civil engineering firm who did most of the work on the, on the fieldhouse site plan. Kent Norcross is here from Dibble Engineering, and we also have one of the architects from RS&amp;H here as well in case there are questions specifically about the building. We've tried to include all of the drawings in your packet of the site plan itself. This is, you know, the parking lot and the landscaping and curbs and gutters and sidewalks and road construction and those types of things, and how the building sits on the, on the site itself. So, hopefully you've had an opportunity to review that and look through that. Staff, you know, based on our review, would recommend approval of this case 20-002SP, site plan for the community center fieldhouse, as was recommended by the planning commission, subject to the following. And this is in the code, "Approval of the site plan shall expire and be of no effect unless a building permit has been issued within one year of the date of the approval of the site plan. Approval of the site plan shall expire and be of no effect two years following approval unless construction has begun on the property and is diligently being pursued to completion and conformance." The reason that's in there is we don't want to approve a site plan and then have something sit out there through four or five years, and the character of the neighborhood might change to where it doesn't fit anymore. So, we would want to bring that back to you for an additional review if, if we haven't begun some type of movement toward construction. I think that's only fair to the neighborhood and to the city as a whole. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have from me.
Do you know when they're going to start building or construction?
Yeah, it's a great question. Design will be finished at the end of March, and, you know, conceivably at that point, we'll have construction drawings ready to go to bid and, and start construction. It's really just a matter of, I think, some of the details of financing that are still out there. So, I think there, there are some questions that still have to be answered. I think we have bids out right now for financing mechanisms. I'm not totally familiar with all of those, but I do know that, you know, we're, we're pursuing some financing type of structure for this. Certainly an appropriated item in the capital fund. We did, you know, input into the budget $10 million that, that was approved as, as an appropriated line item, but I think there's certainly some question on, you know, the front end of that, the revenue side. Where's, where's that money coming from?
The, you said on the $10 million, I've been sitting down here since August before I was voted in and everything, and the number's always 9.5 roughly, right?
Yep.
But it's not turnkey, correct?
Well...
Does that include basketball courts, hoops, and etc.?
Yeah. It, it includes all the equipment inside the building. What it doesn't include are desks, computers, basketballs, that type of thing. But includes flooring, includes hoops, includes, you know, electrical outlets, so you can plug in treadmills and that type of thing. There are certainly, there's some equipment at the existing facility that I believe is slated to move over, but there's certainly equipment that still would need to be purchased. Nine, actually, the latest number that we have is about 9.4 million. With, and then there's a half a million dollar contingency, so you're at 9.9 million, just under that. So, we're, we're still trying to be under that target $10 million mark. But that, that doesn't, that does include a half a million dollar contingency in that budget.
Okay.
Yep.
And then on that big room on the side, I believe, is that just concrete floor right now?
It, it is. In the construction budget is just concrete. There's an add alternate to put in some athletic-type flooring, rubberized-type flooring that would include lines and so on and so forth. And that room also has an add alternate to install the basketball hoops in that room. So, that room has, in that budget that I just mentioned, does not include flooring or basketball hoops in that one multipurpose room. The other two gyms have six basketball courts, or basketball hoops and flooring.
Okay. No, thank you.
Good questions.
The other part off to the east of it is just a gravel parking lot?
It is. Yep. The large part is, is gravel, but there's certainly a, a number of paved parking spaces. I don't remember the actual number, 70-ish, I think, paved parking stalls.
Is that gravel lot for future?
It is. It'd be for overflow parking for sure, and, and I think if this were expanded in some point, when we originally started this, Morgan Strong was going strong. And there was some thought that there might be an aquatic center added on to this, so we wanted to leave plenty of room for paved parking for that in the future. But I think certainly as we see a demand and need for this facility, there's quite possibly a need for additional paved parking, so we wanted to leave plenty of space for that. But it is slated to be built as gravel.
Any other questions for Mr. Glamire?
Just exciting to get closer.
Closer every day.
Yep.
So, you don't want to stay in the armory?
All right. Well, thank you all very much.
Comments from the applicant. I guess we are the applicant, are we?
I would be happy to speak to it. I, as, sitting new in this position, Steve did ask me if I would say a couple of things, and I've been following the progress of the fieldhouse the, all the way along. And it seems like where we're at in the process, this is coming right in lines with the original intent with the council as we've moved through the process of purchasing land and then moving through the design process. And so, at this point, I wouldn't see any reason not to approve this and move it forward.
Okay. Do you have like a goal date, like when you want to have financing in place and like start?
We will, we have, we have some placeholders on future agenda items that we are definitely bringing in front of you here soon to have those discussions about the financing. So, as soon as we can get those tackled, then that'll allow us to then set the rest of the schedule.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Public comments. Is there anybody wishes to speak on this issue for or against, or?
Good evening.
Thanks.
It's always nice for everybody to have the information except us. And that's to get it built. Has anybody done any, any projections as to what it's going to take to make this thing work?
That's what Mr. Nation was just referring to. There are places set on the upcoming agendas. Mr. Glamire stated that there was, we're at 9.9 million on the construction side of it and with some of the equipment, and that doesn't include the furnishings that are involved. But as far as the financing, that's what Mr. Nation had alluded to. We do have areas or items on upcoming agendas that they will be bringing financing options and payment options to counsel, and you will be informed as well.
That's all well and good, but who's going to operate this? Has anybody done the, the paperwork to come up with what it's going to cost for labor?
Oh, for operation, I see. That's your question?
Utilities and maintenance and that type of information.
Well, it'll be a replacement for the armory, so I mean, that, that will be part of the operational budget.
Well, I guess that's a good excuse for not coming up with, with the, the real figures. You know, we, we kind of need to know. All of you received your property tax notices, and I'm sure they went down.
Do you have the same assessment we do? Those are very valid questions.
Yeah, I'm so glad that you asked that question. The operations and maintenance side, right now, it's been a really exciting process for the recreation staff to be in on some of these meetings to determine like, what are we offering right now, and can we continue that in the new facility? How can we grow? But I think they have definitely been conservative as far as on the programming side. And I don't know, I know Steve is here. If he wanted to come and talk to that point as far as, he doesn't have plans right now to hire 10 new staff or, you know. I think one thing that maybe, that is an easy question to ask as far as, since the facility's larger, if just the maintenance side is going to increase, but, so, yeah. They're not hard questions to answer though, so those are things that we can definitely get back to with firmer answers.
Well, not only back to me, but to the general public, because we're the one that's going to be paying that bill.
Absolutely.
One way or another, either through a fee for participation or for a annual contract or six months or some type of, you know. We're building a, a milk house, but we got no cows.
Well, we do have cows. He'll explain you what the herd's like right there, give him a chance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. French. Steve, you want to address some of these?
Good evening, counsel. So, some of those questions can be answered. Some of them are unknown. I don't know what the utility bill is going to be for that bill. I don't know that off the top of my head. I don't. I have addressed in previous council meetings such as things such as facility drop-in rates and so forth. If you do recall, we currently charge $2 for an adult, a dollar for youth. Seniors 55 and older can get into the facility free before 9:00 AM. I highly doubt we can maintain those rates at a new facility. However, that is ultimately a decision for counsel to make. I will continue to do research. I, in fact, am currently setting up several field trips to several local recreation centers to review their operations and maintenance. I'm old friends with the recreation superintendent of Greeley. His name's Scott Shuttenberg. Used to be the director of recreation at the University of Northern Colorado. I actually just sent him an email today to see if we can tour his facility and ask, and I have a very long list of questions, asking about costs of operations, cost of maintenance, fee structures, things like this. So, yes, these things will take time, and yes, we are planning to do more programming. I am not planning on hiring 10 full-time employees, maybe one or two, if you let me. But it's, it's an exciting time, and yes, there are questions, and we will hopefully address that in the future. Any other questions?
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
So, basically, to answer that question that was just asked is we'll, that'll be addressed in our schedule of fees.
Yes.
That will be adopted once we get it up and going.
I, it's, it's quite known that recreation isn't completely self-sufficient. We try, we try to keep things affordable for the public, for them to afford things. If we were to charge people at a, so there was no subsidy, I, I think a lot of our families wouldn't be able to afford little kids' soccer leagues or baseball leagues. So, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. And I'd just like to ask, add as a reminder to everybody, the reason that counsel went ahead and did this is because we have so severely overgrown the capacity of the armory to be able to have recreational facilities for all the citizens of Fort Morgan, but especially for the kids. When they talk about now drop-in basketball games at the armory, it's like 10-on-10 with a couple of 5-on-5s going on, on the sidelines and everything too. So, it's something that I really do think we need for the kids of Morgan, and that's why it came about in the first place and everything, and why the council has been behind it, even though it's such a large expenditure, is because it just seems like it's the right thing to do for the youth of Fort Morgan. And anybody that's used the armory, there's no way of expanding. It's not sufficient to meet the needs of what we have for our recreation department. To meet ADA requirements in that building would be astronomical, not feasible, and we wouldn't have the, the parking availability for it. So, you know, you got the upstairs, the ground floor, which is all basketball court and the walking track upstairs. So, we did have a meeting last year, and there was a lot of people in attendance that felt that the, this was something that the city needed to look forward to is replacing the outdated buildings that we have, and the armory was one of the biggest ones, so. Are there any other? Made it in just under the wire.
You know what they say about the last voice being the voice that is remembered, but anyway. Mostly, I have a question, maybe a comment too. I think that I'm extremely conflicted about this situation. Maybe it's because I didn't take the time to become as informed, but I, I do feel that this has proceeded without much public information beyond maybe the meetings themselves. And that leaves me conflicted, because I do believe it has, there's a need to it. But my, my main question is, if this is built, does this automatically mean we're going ahead with the rest of the movement to a city complex? Can this, can this building stand alone in terms of its functionality? Because I am hardline opposed to moving all of the city facilities out there. This building was, was, was done, and the surrounding things have been done for the very clear purpose of this is where the city administration was going to take place. And so, can this building stand alone, or is it inherent that if we do this, we are automatically moving towards doing the rest of it?
No, this will stand on its own merits.
And, and I'm, I'm much more comfortable with that than I am with the, the whole complex idea. That, that whole idea, maybe it's because I was mayor when this was done, but I feel a real ownership of this and, and would hate to see it abandoned. And more than that, I'm bothered deeply by the abandonment of downtown. I, I hate seeing, when I moved to this town, it was a vibrant, live downtown. Now, I've seen morgues with more activity going on in them than our downtown, and, and I think the city should be very concerned about that. I think it's a myth to believe that we can be a vibrant city. As a matter of fact, I said to people, for us to call ourselves the Christmas capital of the plains with the deadness of our downtown is a complete and total joke. There's nothing about what we have here that makes us the Christmas capital of the plains, unless all the rest of the plains have completely been abandoned and, and left behind, and I don't think that's true. So, I think there's some things that we, we need, really need to be concerned about and really need to be looking at, and it doesn't necessarily mean moving everything out there, so.
Nope.
I've had my say. Thank you.
This will be standing on its own, so. Great question. Thank you, Mr. Travithic. Is there any other public comment?
I want to comment publicly, but not necessarily about the fieldhouse.
No, this is a public hearing for the site application for that. So, okay. Okay. If there's nobody else that wishes to speak, I would ask the clerk if any oral or written comments were received at your office prior to this public hearing.
No, Your Honor.
Comments by counsel? Any council members have any comments regarding this? I, I would say that to answer some of the questions, Mr. French, your question that... I would say that to answer some of the questions, Mr. French, your question, that the operations will be based on setting of our schedule of fees and adjusted over the course of time. We won't know how it's, the actual costs of operation of the building as you're talking utilities and such. I do know that the design criteria that was put into this does meet the LEED criteria that the firms have, have been part of, which is very energy-efficient standards. So, and as far as Mr. Trivithik's comment, her question, the Field House will be a standalone with, without the incorporation of a city complex at this time. So, I, I honor you, or I agree with your comments regarding our downtown area. So, okay.
Your Honor, are you on council comments now?
I am on council and...
Yes. Would you, I would like to have, last week I was sitting out there, this week I'm here, and I would like to be brought up to speed with all of this if I could work with somebody to see the paperwork and documentation.
We will get you all of that as you have that right. And you were sitting up here last week.
I'm not from Missouri. I'm from Oregon, but you have to show me.
Okay. With that, is there any other comments from council?
I, I know there's a lot of questions out there still. Don't think of a project this size that we don't try to make sure we're looking at every stone, but this is going to provide the city with a great asset that we're putting a lot of money in, but it will be here for the next 100 years at least. I mean, I spent a lot of time working and talking with the youth. The Armory is a very popular place, but it definitely is, does not fit the need of our youth as far as recreation activities. I cannot tell you how many times the city has to borrow other facilities from other local entities to utilize their programming. And the scheduling complexity between using the school district's facilities with the school district events and all the other parks, it, it is definitely a need. And I think it, once it's built and once you see the kids flocking to it and the joy and excitement, that it will be definitely exciting to see. So I'm very excited about this project and can't wait. Wish we could put the shovel on the ground tomorrow.
Hopefully, it'll be something that will attract the youth to stay around and help build these buildings. So, okay. Any other council comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Allison Howe and a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call, or by, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Legal action, Mr. Wilson.
Mayor and council, you've heard the presentation on this matter. Appropriate action is by a resolution to approve or not approve the site plan for the new city Field House.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I make a resolution to approve the case number 20002, site plan for the community center Field House as it was recommended by the planning commission, subject to the following. Approval of the site plan shall expire and be of no effect unless the billing permit has been issued within one year of the date of the approval of the site plan. Approval of the site plan shall expire and be of no effect within two years following the approval unless construction has begun on the property and is diligently being pursued to completion and, guys helping me out, my bifocals are not coming in good here. And approval of the site plan.
Did you second that, Kevin? Okay, I have a resolution by Doug Sashow, a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Your Honor, I have a quick procedural question. So typically, we won't see site plan reviews. This one was just an exception?
We were the owners, and it's a large area is the reason that we, we saw this portion of it.
Great.
You bet. And if you could get with Ms. Deal and the rest of, get council that information that she's looking for.
Be happy to.
Okay.
These are terrible.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on ordinance 1241 and ordinance amending Article 4, Chapter 20 of the Land Use Code of the City of Fort Morgan Municipal Code Establishing Center Point Plaza Design Standards. This is a public hearing once again, and the same standards and rules apply as the previous two. First is the legal notice. Mr. Brennan, was this properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on January 11.
Next is presentation of the ordinance. Welcome back, Mr. Glennmeyer.
Yeah, here I am again. This item, you've seen a couple of times before used, so this is the second and final step to adopt this ordinance. These are design standards for Center Point Plaza. This is your development, your subdivision. And as you know, Jenny Elrich started the process to develop some design standards for Center Point. Sarah's picked that ball up and with Jeff and Nina's help have crafted the standards you have before you. We've had this before the public a couple of times and haven't received any comments for or against. Think this is a good set of standards and applaud the efforts of all of those folks that have put these together. So, Sarah couldn't be here tonight, so I'm kind of carrying the ball for both of us, but happy to answer any questions if you have any from me.
I have a question. So, the Overly district, the Field House isn't part of this.
Correct.
But the new multifamily units that they're still talking about building?
Would be.
Would they will be following this as well?
Correct.
That's my only question.
Yeah. Yeah, the Field House lot in particular was exempt primarily because it wouldn't meet just about any of the design standards from a building standpoint. You simply don't build a 40,000-square-foot building and not do it as efficiently and as cost-effective as possible. And the way to do that was metal building. And these design standards really don't allow you to do more than 25% metal building. So it would be really expensive to build a Field House if you tried to build a brick and mortar.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Glennmeyer?
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Next are public comments. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this issue? No? Seeing none, I would ask if there was any oral or written comments submitted to your office prior to this hearing.
No, Your Honor.
None? Comments by council? Think we reviewed these at our last meetings.
Mm-hmm.
There is no further comments by council. I would entertain a motion to close.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Allison Howe and a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Council action, Mr. Wilson.
Mayor and council, this is second and final reading of this ordinance. You've heard it on prior readings. An appropriate action is a resolution approving the ordinance.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to approve second and final reading of ordinance 1241, an ordinance amending Article 4, Chapter 20 of the Land Use Code Establishing Center Point Design Standards and the authorization to publish by title only.
Second.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next on the agenda is a consent agenda. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight's consent agenda includes Item A, approval of the disbursements and payroll for December, and Item B, approval of the minutes of the January 14, 2020 city council special meeting. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine business by the council and will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that should, item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
I would entertain a resolution accepting the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Brian Erdie Alice. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next item on the agenda is public comment or audience participation for items not on the agenda. Anybody wish to address council?
Does it time?
It is.
Thank you.
Can you please sign in?
I brought my...
You want, they need to...
But before I... I signed it.
As you, as you come up, sign in to the, the sheet if you would, please. Thank you.
And I have.
Okay.
Before I start, I don't know who to ask, but would somebody please have a light bulb put in the light on the front porch of this building so that when we come and go in the dark, we'll be able to get down the stairs, please?
Very good. We will get that done.
All right. Okay. I'm Barbara Keenan. I live at 302 Grant Street, which is in the older part of town. And first, I thank the incumbents and all the newly-elected council members and mayor for serving in this very challenging time. And I know it's difficult, and I thank you for your willingness to serve. I've taught at the high school for many years, and often students come back for reunions and they stop to see me, and they tell me, especially those who haven't been here for a while, how disappointing the town is. They call it unkempt. They've called it shabby, rundown. They comment on the broken sidewalks. They comment on the dead and dying trees. They comment on the unattractive rock and weed-filled parkings and yards. They think Main Street looks so sad, and they wonder why the town was left to run down, and was it deliberate? I hope since we are going in a different direction and moving on, that the council will set a priority to spruce up our town, spending more time and money and creative programs to improve its appearance and focusing on Main Street, the heart of our city, rather than concentrating on a possible development out east. Perhaps a rewards program, sharing the cost of, say, sidewalk building with the homeowner and the city. Or a carrot-and-stick approach to the weed program. Give the homeowners who pick their weeds and pull them something and give them a ticket if they don't. I hope the city will have an ongoing approach and yearly schedule to remove the dead trees and trim the dead limbs, especially on the parkings which hang over the street because that is city property, or it's city property when you want it to be city property. I am thrilled that you're going to build a Field House. I am still mourning Morgan Strong. I think it's wonderful. It's going to take deliberate decisions to regain the trust of skeptical citizens who were sold a bond issue to build badly damaged streets, only to find, through the open records request of one very persistent citizen, that money had been just squirreled away that could have been used on a yearly schedule to fix streets and sidewalks and so on, but was saved to build a complex without a citizen's vote. Also, I hope that we learn that no appointed official should be able to write his own contract or dictate the specific terms of his termination. That negotiation process should be supervised by a lawyer chosen by the council. In the charter revision election, as well as the only contested council election, the overwhelming vote was to retain the distinct boundary between the police chief and the city manager established by earlier councils, as well as a resounding mandate for the winning candidate to pursue specific goals. I wrote a, a letter to the, a letter to the editor to the Times just before the election, and the Times didn't print it, sharing these very same concerns that I'm sharing tonight and asking at that time that when people ask citizens to their vote, you ask the candidate, what is your vision for Fort Morgan moving into the future? And then listen to that, and then share your own views. And then that's what I'm asking you to do, to listen to us. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
I just have one thing, a point of clarification, just a question or whatever. I had anticipated that you probably would already have had an executive session for us to start a search for city manager or something. When are you planning on doing that, or when are we planning on doing that, or whatever?
We will put that on to go, and we will start reviewing the job descriptions and put together that. So within the next meeting or so is when we will put together for, for job search.
I figured we needed to move on, like I said, I even anticipated that you'd already would have had something on for tonight, so that's why I thought I'd clarify.
Thank you, and we will. Thank you for that, Kevin. Okay, reports by officials and staff. Mr. Nation?
At this, at this point, you have some reports in your packet, and I'll just kind of leave it at that. I'll ask, or any of the other directors have anything they need to report on tonight? Nothing? Okay. Yeah, I don't have anything directly as I get used to this position and the huge amount of changes to my schedule that I'm finding. I will be doing my best to keep up with everything. I do have two days of meetings in Nebraska that I'll be leaving for in the morning, so if anybody's looking for me for the next two days, that's where I'll be heading. And so, once again, my representation on MEAN is still intact, and so I'll be voting all of our interests for the city when I'm out there. So, but I'm getting just used to the position and all the additional things that go along with it, so, but I'm always here to answer questions when you got them. Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up. Bids, meetings, and announcements, Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city has a large number of bids out right now. I'll try and make these as quick as possible. The city's accepting sealed bids for water mainline Insta-valves until 3:00 p.m. on January 22, for electrical conductors until 3:00 p.m. on January 22, electric distribution wood poles until 3:00 p.m. on January 22, two trailer-mounted variable message sign boards until 3:00 p.m. on January 23, census water meters until 3:00 p.m. on January 23, hydrants, water valves and pipe until 3:00 p.m. on January 23, Itron 100W water erts until 3:00 p.m. on January 23, water main replacement parts until 3:00 p.m. on January 23, contract for specific construction manager slash general contractor services regarding the new community center slash recreation Field House until 9:00 a.m. on January 24, proposals for financial services until 4:00 p.m. on January 24, three-reel conductor poly trailer until 3:00 p.m. on January 29, automated fueling system credit card reader replacement project for the airport until 3:00 p.m. on January 31, MCO three-yard trash containers until 2:15 p.m. on February 11, tandem axle refuse truck until 2:15 p.m. on February 11, Pacmore HLR 29 refuse unit until 2:15 p.m. on February 11, wastewater collection system relining projects until 3:00 p.m. on February 13. 11th, wastewater collection system relining projects until 3:00 p.m. on February 13th, pad-mounted transformers until 3:00 p.m. on February 13th, pole-mounted transformers until 3:00 p.m. on February 13th, water line isolation project until 3:00 p.m. on February 13th, 2020 HPP paving and chip seal projects until 3:00 p.m. on February 20th, and 2020 on-call HPP paving services until 3:00 p.m. on February 20th. Under meetings, the Museum Heritage Foundation will meet on January 23 at 4:00 p.m., and the next city council regular meeting will be February 4 at 6:00 p.m. here at City Hall. Winter reading challenge for youth and adults will be starting February 1 at the library. There's an informational meeting on January 30 about a trip by the senior center for anyone over 21, which will be in September, and will visit the islands of New England. And the senior center is hosting a contest for National Pie Day on January 23. All the information on those last few announcements is on our website.
There's no other items to come before council. This meeting's adjourned.